Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. I call to order this public business meeting. We do have a quorum. We have six voting members present. At this time, Vice Presi-
Five.
Oh, I'm sorry, five. I am sorry. And we do have the student member. We have five voting members present. I forgot. Just subtracted one. Okay. At this time, Vice President Stouffer will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion?
Agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions? Any discussion of the agenda? All those in favor of approval? Five. The student member concurs. Motion carries. This time, we'll have approval of the minutes.
Madam President, move for approval of closed session minutes dated Tuesday, December 7th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Stouffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of December 7th, 2021? All those in favor? Five votes. Motion carries.
Move for approval of business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, December 7th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Stouffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the business meeting of December 7th, 2021? All those in favor? We have five. And the student member concurs. Motion carries. So all minutes have been approved. This time, we'll have public comment. I'd like to read from Policy KD. This is under Rema numeral three, Policy Statement and Procedures, Section A, Procedures for Business Meetings, number one. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools, except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak for up to five minutes. In Mr. Bickford's absence, Mrs. Murray will be our timekeeper this evening. Mrs. Murray, you want to explain the timekeeping?
This means you have 30 seconds left. This means your time is up.
Thank you. At this time, I have two people who have signed up in advance. First person is Crystal Sprecher.
Does matter which one?
Does matter. Good evening.
Good evening. I want to thank you all for letting me speak tonight. I've been wanting to get here for a couple months now, but with my son with football, I decided to put my son first. But now, a couple weeks ago, it kind of hit me a little harder. I did send out an email to each one of you. I don't know if it's on my end or what, but I didn't get any response back. So I would like to read my email to you. "Good evening. I hope this finds you well. I apologize I could not make the meeting and speak, but I intend to soon." I'm here now. "The reason I am emailing is some of the protocols you have in place is crazy. I heard throughout several meetings that you go by the Health Department COVID protocols. Well, I have to disagree with you. The Maryland Department of Health has been in contact with me on 11/29/21. My husband was in the hospital. He was released from quarantine on 11/29/21. My son was not near him for seven days. I took my son and myself to get tested, and we were negative. Tuesday morning, we get a call from the Health Department releasing my son from quarantine since we both were negative. Tuesday afternoon, I get a call from the Washington County School COVID Center. They asked if my son was tested. I say yes, and he was negative, and so was I. They proceeded to ask if we were vaxxed. I said no, which, by the way, is none of anyone's business as I was informed by a personal -- let me see, I lost my place here. I was informed by a health professional that regardless of an employer or school, it is not required we give out any health information. So she then proceeded to ask if my son was around my husband. I said he was in the same room, but we have been released by the Health Department, and we have been tested negative. She then replied, my son had to start his quarantine over, and if I test him on the 5th, he could go back on the 6th. I told her I will not test him again. There is no reason to be tested. He was tested two times in the last two weeks, both of them negative. I'm not going to test him twice in the same week. There's no reason for it. She proceeded to tell me he can return on the 13th since I won't get him tested. Why is this? Three weeks prior, he had a friend that was tested positive that he eats lunch, and he sits across from him, three feet apart, with no mask on to eat. And he did not have to quarantine, nor did I get a call. Why not? That's in school, no mask. I hope you can explain this to me because I feel this makes no sense whatsoever. I feel this mask is a bunch of nonsense. If you have to wear it in school, outside events, you can sit close together with no mask on. Basketball practice inside the school with no mask. Is the gym getting sanitized after practice so our kids can go back to school the next day and put the mask on? I understand that Mr. Michael enforced the mask mandate by itself without any vote, but I feel it is pointless, not to mention it should be the parents' or the students' choice. I'm not against it, nor am I for it. But I'm for the right to choose whether I wear the mask or not. I hate to see what's in store for this new variant. I know two board members that is on the parent's side for the choice. By the way, I thank you. It would be nice to get more involved with the children schooling, and I feel that the parents are. With that being said, I know the election is coming up, and I can't wait till I see some changes. I feel the biggest change that should be is let the parents worry about their children's health and you all worry about the courses, the books that is placed in our schools and the courses of our students that are learning, like the founding fathers, Constitution. I also would like to get the teachers more help. I mean, they're struggling. Some teachers are teaching 60 kids a time. I said, and the rumors going around, we're going to end up going to virtual, considering nine DC schools are closing, Prince George's County is closing, West Virginia is on the way. So if we are virtual, can we keep our kids virtual? I wish you all well and be waiting to hear the answers. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Sprecher. Next person I have on the list is Neil Becker. Mr. Becker?
Good evening, President Williams, board members, Dr. Michael and staff. There's hard copies, same thing that I'm reading, but just have a hard copy there for you. First, I appreciate the thoughtful discussion related to the superintendent's budget this afternoon, and I encourage the public to check it out, find it online, watch the meeting. Very thoughtful discussion. It's clear that Dr. Michael and his team are stretching every dollar as far as possible. Soon, it will not be possible to stretch the dollars any further. I'm hopeful that the commissioners are willing to boost the Washington County Public Schools' budget as they have done for other county departments and divisions recently. Literally, our school system relies on the local funding and depends on that commitment for the success of our students. Secondly, the posted agenda for this evening's meeting includes a proposal to modify the 2021-2022 WCPS calendar. Thank you for considering such a topic as over 1,800 teachers and 1,200-plus support personnel and administrators dedicate themselves to student success in this very challenging school year. Thank you for listening to educators who have addressed this body in person via email, via video, and email over the last several weeks. They remain committed to our students and their families, and the blocks of self-directed planning time will enable all staff to complete essential duties. The proposed early dismissals are not a perfect solution. There is no perfect solution, and they may present challenges to some staff, students, and families. But the dismissals are a good faith effort to provide planning time to staff who are clamoring for the time they need to be at their best for the students and their colleagues. In closing, again, I say thank you to the Washington County Public Schools staff for this thorough budget presentation and to the Board of Education for your willingness to identify blocks of time. I am hopeful that the Washington County Public Schools and our community partners can work together and ensure that the calendar changes are low stress for families, students, and staff. Best wishes for relaxing and rewarding winter break and holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward to speak or help with comments?
My name is Robert Burton. Can I move this? There we go.
The Robert, I heard the last name, please.
Robert Burton. And I'm a WCPS parent, and this is my 11th year as a fourth-grade teacher in Washington County. I want to first thank the board members for asking teachers to speak out and valuing our feedback. To my colleagues and all WCPS employees, I want to thank you for your service to our community and your spark that drives you to teach our children. I've seen some great things happening in the schools during the last two challenging years of COVID. Teachers, school staff, and administrators have been working hard to meet the challenges to make sure that our students get the support that they need in school. Our school board, Dr. Michael and his team have worked hard throughout digital learning and our return to the schools. We appreciate that. As there are many celebrations that we've had in our classrooms and with our students, we also currently face many challenges that impede our ability to do what drives us, that is to teach and inspire our students and to provide them with the learning environment that they deserve. Did you know that many schools across the county have been without nurses during the pandemic, and some are still without nurses to serve their students? As I've said, I have taught in 11 years. I've never not had a nurse until this year. It's been fixed at my school, but I know it's still a problem at other schools. The truth is that we are short on not only nurses but also substitute teachers. When this happens, many support staff are given a crash course on first aid and then sent intact as nurses. These are not the staff we ideally want nursing our kids, but these people are some of the very people -- or I'm sorry. But also, these people are some of the very people that have the necessary training and licenses to fill some of the roles that children most need right now, such as our ESP, our case managers, and yes, even our social workers and counselors have gotten to play nurse. At the last meetings, many school staff and attendants and many board members spoke out on the need for more counselors and more social workers. I heard that again, listening to the budget meeting. Ms. Williams, I heard you address that specifically. I know that you know about this need. While this is a need, we also need to make sure that we are properly using those that we already have trained and who stand ready to support the increasing mental health needs of our children. We need to treat them as professionals, which means valuing their professional opinions, and I don't think it can involve using them as nurses or lunch aids. We need these people that have these degrees. We have to use them properly. When we run out of substitute teachers, many support staff are also pulled to teach classrooms. This leaves some of our children with the greatest needs, lacking the staff resources that they so desperately need and deserve. In some schools, it also leaves the teachers losing their planning time that they need to prepare for their kids, and it leads to expanded class sizes as some teachers take children from these teacherless classes. Many of these shortages fall onto the backs of teachers either directly or indirectly as they try to support children's academic and social-emotional needs while missing the staff that they need to best accomplish this. To make matters more challenging for teachers to meet the needs of their students, did you know that three fifths of the elementary curriculum for fourth and fifth grade teachers was redone and relaunched as we tried to work our way out of the pandemic? I know many of the teachers and staff that made the curriculum are amazing, hard-working individuals who create top-notch curriculums. I agree with a lot of the curriculums. I love what I see. However, to change the curriculum or programs in math, social studies, and ELA vocabulary in one year is not fair to teachers while we work our way out of a global pandemic or to the students that they teach. Changing the social studies curriculum also means that teachers need to realign and change much of the ELA curriculum so that the natural cross-curricular connections can be made for students, which means really we are restructuring and planning four fifths of our curriculum for subject areas in one year. That's hard, and it's hard to help our new teachers that are already struggling when we have that on our backs already. All these problems add up to make the work and pace unsustainable for teachers. Teachers are tired. I think that the biggest academic gaps I've seen through COVID are with reading fluency, math fluency, and writing fluency, all the basics, which we can and have been addressing. However, one of the biggest needs is the children's social-emotional needs. We keep hearing it over and over. While many children have come out of the last two years with serious mental health needs, I also see many children who just want positive attention from adults. They just want to have an adult there to listen to them and feel heard. This requires proper staffing of support positions in schools so that these staff are there for the children, but also so that classroom teachers are not so constantly filling holes and overwhelmed with new curriculum that they cannot be present for the children as the children deserve. I could ask if you care, but I already know the answer to that. You do. The board, Dr. Michael, your team, you greatly care. Your positions are harder than most people realize, and the last two years have presented even more challenges to your jobs. So I won't ask if you care. Instead, I'll ask, what are you going to do to address these problems and help the teachers and school staff that are teaching and caring for our children? How are you going to show us that you care? We need more self-directed time in the form of an early dismissal day added to the calendar each month for this purpose. We need to increase the salary of our substitute teachers, ESP staff, nurses, and bus drivers to compete with the counties around us in attracting individuals to WCPS and also to incentivize staying for the experienced personnel that we already have in these positions. And this is my last sentence here. If we do not address these problems, our growing shortages in these positions will also lead to a shortage of experienced teachers. Please come visit our schools and please provide us with the help that we need. Dr. Michael, board, I really appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Thank you. This time, we'll have a board member response to public comment. Mrs. Murray?
Yes, I just want to thank everybody for coming out and for the people that spoke. Hopefully, if we work together, we can overcome some of these challenges that we face. Things aren't easy. We know they aren't easy. We're working on things all the time, trying to come up with ways to help, and we just have to work together. So thank you so much for all you do. Thank you for coming out. We do appreciate it.
I'll say one thing as well. I mean, I think Mr. Burton and Mr. Becker will get their response here shortly, at least part of it. But as far as the student quarantining, I have said this in the past, I am concerned about healthy students being required to stay home. I wish we would do something to at least make sure if a healthy student wants to go to school that we could make that happen. I understand that there are legitimate concerns when that happens, but I do think there should, at the very least, be a discussion on that, and I do hope that that can happen.
Thank you. Mrs. Sprecher, we have your email address here and your phone number on the sign-up sheet, so someone will be in contact with you with regard to the questions that you've posed. Okay? Thank you.
I'd just like to say something.
Certainly.
It's my understanding, and I understand that responding to Mr. Burton, that some of those problems he cited are being handled, being looked at by the superintendent and his staff concerning substitute teachers and things of that nature. So we are aware of those things, and they are being handled at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Stouffer. Anyone else? All right, we'll move to old business at this time. We have one item of old business for consideration. And Dr. Willow, you're here in the place of Dr. Pew.
Correct.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. I am here to seek your approval to adjust the 2021-2022 school calendar to include five two-hour early dismissals for students on January 14th, February 18th, March 11th, April 29th, and May 13th. The additional time will be allocated for instructional planning.
Thank you, Dr. Willow. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to adjust the 2021-2022 school calendar to include five two-hour early dismissals for students on January 14th, February 18th, March 11th, April 29th, and May 13th, 2022, in order to provide additional time for instructional planning.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Questions for Dr. Willow or any discussion?
Dr. Willow, there is no perfect time to schedule these things, correct? I mean, we've gotten messages about from encore teachers about scheduling them on Friday, but somebody's always going to get caught up, I guess, regardless of when we schedule them.
Dr. Palmer and Dr. Wilcox will be working with principals to try to avoid as much of that as possible. The elementary, middle, and high school schedules are different, and so, you know, you're right, there is probably no perfect solution, but there are definitely steps that we can take to reduce the impact on our staff.
I'd like to just add that I think that at best, this is going to be a Band-Aid. I mean, essentially, we're giving, what, about 10 extra hours of planning? That's a very small portion of what is remaining in the school year. So I know that, like I said, you know, basically, I do think that there is more we can do, and there is more that -- and I'm sure the discussion is not going to end with this. I'll say that. I would just like to add that because I do think that at best, this is a Band-Aid, just like to point out that the reason -- part of the reason why we're having these problems is because teachers just want to teach. You know, obviously, there's -- everyone, no matter what your occupation is, there's a part of it that you don't necessarily like, but, you know, when we start adding in things like SLOs, sure, it sounds great and reasonable, student learning outcomes. You know, their teachers, especially ones in this room, I'm sure, don't mind being held accountable because I'm sure you're all great teachers. But a lot of the problems, I wonder, because it's been a while since I've been in the classroom, I wonder how much we can ask the state to maybe make some changes as well and give the teachers the freedom to run their classrooms the way that they want to and let them do what they do best, which is teach kids. And, you know, like I said, this is a Band-Aid that I'm happy to at least provide. It's nothing more than a bone we're throwing right now, I feel. I do hope there is more that we can do, but I do think there's some changes that do need to happen at the state level as well to help you guys be able to, like I said, do what you signed up for as well, so.
The vote, we're voting on Mrs. Murray's motion, and Dr. Zentmeyer's second, to adjust the 2021-2022 school calendar to include five two-hour early dismissals for students. All those in favor? Five votes. And student member concurs. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Under new business this evening, our first item of consideration is tonight's consent agenda. We have Mr. Scott Bakedel, Supervisor of Purchasing, presenting. Good evening.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have two items for review. These items were reviewed by our purchasing review committee and are being recommended for approval. And staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the awards and renewals for Diabetes Population Health Management Program Administration to WellSpark at a cost of $76,750 and Student Information System renewal and cloud hosting services solution to EduPoint Educational Systems at a five-year cost of $1,376,509.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stouffer. Questions? Discussion?
Yeah, I'm actually going to amend my motion or make a motion within the motion. I move that we table discussion for the award of Diabetes Population Health Management Program Administration.
So are you asking us to table discussion or are you asking us to table this motion as to vote?
To table the portion of this motion that includes diabetes. So remove that from this motion to table it for a future, to add it on for future discussion.
Okay, so your motion is to remove by tabling?
Yes. The diabetes.
The diabetes portion, so that's number one, item number one on the consent agenda?
Correct.
So you're okay on the second one? I would like to-
I do have some questions about that one, but for the time being, I would like to-
Okay, so your motion is to amend the main motion, which is to approve the consent agenda by tabling item number one?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Discussion on the amendment.
Well, as I understand it, this is on an as-needed basis and so forth when employees do go to seek this help with diabetes, which is a terrible disease, terrible, terrible disease. I have two stepchildren. Both of them are diabetic. Neither one of the parents are, so it is something horrible and can lead to serious health problems and so forth. Dr. Michael, you have comments about this?
I don't know that I have any comments. I mean, we certainly can bring back more information to the board when it comes back up. What I understand it to be is an educational component that will help us save healthcare costs. So by managing -- I don't understand everything, but by managing- costs, so by managing, I don't understand everything, but by managing diabetes, you can reduce healthcare costs, which everyone helps share in, so I see this as a very positive step forward to help save money to our healthcare fund balance. So, I can appreciate if it gets tabled, and if it's tabled, the board would have to vote to remove it from the table at some point and then take action on it, I think, but if there's additional information we can provide, or something else we can share, we'd be glad to do so. I know Tricia Riley's here tonight, David Brandonberg's here, they can share more information of the purpose of this, maybe there's something we're not clear on, or if there's something we're not providing, we'll certainly be glad to get that at a future meeting date for further consideration, but this is an attempt to save money through education of how to control diabetes, I think, and through that effort, you reduce costs for the healthcare fund and for the individuals as well. That's what I think that it is, but we'll go by the will of the board, and certainly be glad to bring it back if there's more information or questions we could have before the next meeting, or next time you bring it back up. Maybe another idea would be to table to a specific time, if you do that, then it will come back up on that board meeting, so to January 4th, or January 18th, or February, whatever a board meeting is, so maybe that could be a consideration in amending the amendment.
Yes, Mrs. Murray.
When I read this in my packet, when we got the packet, I, you know, I have a family, very close family member that has diabetes, and the education part of it is wonderful, you need to learn about it, because people don't really understand diabetes, and there's so many things that go into it, it's, there's so many things that happen, your eyes, with your heart, with, you know, and so, Dr. Michael's right, it will save money by educating people on how to stay healthy and how to deal with their diabetes, so I am for this, I think it's a good thing. Anytime we can educate anyone and save money on our healthcare plan, I think it's a good thing, I'm for it.
And improve their health, hopefully.
Yes, absolutely.
I will say that... I'm not necessarily against it, I don't personally know much about this, I wonder if this is something that is currently provided by Cigna, I, like I said, I would like to have more information before we vote on this, because I would be shocked if Cigna did not provide education for people to seek it, and if that's the case, you know, what kind of participation would we get in this? I would like to see if this is meant to be a cost-saving measure, I would like to see the projected cost savings, to see how that would make sense, because from what I understand, I know my personal insurance through my work, this, these are things that are provided through my insurance, and I'd be very surprised if it wasn't currently provided, the education. Like, I agree with everything you guys are saying, it's horrible, I highly doubt there's anyone in this room that doesn't know someone with diabetes, I'd be shocked, I'm not trying to say that this is a bad thing to spend money on, I just wonder if it is an efficient thing to spend money on, if there are other services that we're already providing that could make this stuff available.
Would you want to say something before I say something?
Oh, I was just going to say, if we're on the whole consent agenda, tell me if I'm out of order, since our...
We're discussing the amendment, and only the amendment.
Well, let me say this about this, since our colleague has difficulty about this next, the second part two, that perhaps we, having withdrawn his motion, or whatever, and I'll make a motion to table both these things until we have a full board here at the next meeting, but that's up to colleagues to decide, if they want to go that way.
I'm not in favor of the amendment, I'm not in favor of tabling it, I think we have Tricia Riley here, David Brandonberg here, who could provide the information that's being sought to help inform our board members, I don't see what, tabling and putting this off when we have people here who can address our concerns this evening, so I'm going to be voting against the amendment.
I would have hoped that questions, as normally is done, would have been asked prior to the meeting, so that we could expedite this, but apparently, that's not the case.
Well, I'm just pointing out, we do have staff here tonight, I see Joe Allen here in the back for the technology piece, and I see Tricia Riley, so at some point, I would like for staff to provide information, even regardless of what happens here with the motion and amendment, provide information that they can provide, and that'll help us provide better information at the next meeting if it's tabled, or if the motion fails. One of our challenges this evening, I think, Board Action requires four votes, so I'm not sure what's going to happen, you had a motion, a second, it would take four votes, I think, for, to pass either thing, or maybe even pass the amendments.
Correct.
So, I would just ask, we've got experts right here in the room, at some point, I just want them to have the opportunity to share something, even if, I would like to see the system cloud piece move forward, unless there's not enough votes for it to move forward this evening at some point, so, or at least be considered, so.
There's no further discussion, we'll vote on the amendment, and the amendment is to remove the number one on the consent agenda, tabling it for later discussion, consideration, all those in favor of tabling? Okay, two, those voting nay, three, and the student member is a nay, so the amendment fails for lack of four votes, so that brings us back to the main motion, and the motion made by Mr. Evans and seconded by Mr. Stauffer is to approve the awards and renewals for Diabetes Population Health Management Program Administration to WellSpark at a cost of $76,750, and Student Information System Renewal and Cloud Hosting Services Solution to Edupoint Educational Systems at a five-year cost of $1,376,509. So, we'll have discussion of the main motion at this time, or any questions? Yes, Mr. Gupta.
I have a question about the Student Information System Renewal and Cloud Hosting Services, so with that potential purchase, will that, I know teachers have talked to me, and teachers talk a lot about synergy crashing, and them being unable to do attendance on time, or multiple other areas, will this help them with that?
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael, I'm Joe Allen, Executive Director of IT. Yes, having it in the cloud, I think the one reason that it was having difficulty with teachers during the last marking session is because of some of the resources that we have in-house that we can apply to, that when it's in the cloud, it's in an elastic environment, so when there is more demand, they can scale up the resources that are applied, so it should mitigate any problems with teachers taking attendance or doing anything else during grading.
Okay, thank you, because I know that's an issue that teachers talk about almost every single marking period I've been in WCPS, so it's great to see that the board is doing something about it.
I have two questions, let's start with the Edupoint, since that's where the student member led us, this is a single source, correct? Are there other companies that would offer something like this that we're using now that would meet our needs, something, a system of this?
There are other vendors who sell student information systems, we've been on this particular one since 2013 or 14.
Yeah, this was bid back in 2013, was bid 2013-04, that was approved at the February 18th, 2014 board meeting, so this is just a, you know, continuation of that bid for the services, and...
And Mr. Allen, I know that you weren't here then, but I believe there was a reason why we went to Edupoint, is that correct, that there had been a previous system that was being used?
That predates me as well.
Pardon?
That predates me as well.
Yeah, I mean, I know that's what was selected after a committee met and looked at a variety of systems, as Mr. Allen indicated, there's other systems that could be looked at, the challenge with that is, I think it'd be a two- or three-year process to identify a system, to migrate to another system, this was a major undertaking when we went to this system, I don't know if there are perfect systems, I've heard other people have challenges with a variety of things, but certainly something that could be, you know, looked at in the future, to move to something else, this was a pretty substantial cost to move to this system in 2013, I don't remember the numbers at that time, but it takes a big investment to make a transition, and probably after you make the selection, a year of migration or whatever, depending upon what happens, so I think right now, we're looking at moving this to the cloud, is to renew the agreement and to move it to the cloud, so it's kind of like a two-for-piece here, we're trying to get greater service, as well as renew our student information system.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, I'll go with the student information system, my biggest problem with it is that we did not see any other quotes for it, I don't feel comfortable spending that kind of money without knowing what the other options are, so that is a concern of mine, and then I guess, since we're going to vote on it now, might as well ask the questions that I just asked about the diabetes there, like I said, it...
It's Riley, come forward.
Is there... As you're coming up, sorry, is there something that is available through Cigna that will be able to provide these services, do we know what kind of cost savings we can expect to see, you know, I guess I'll go there.
Right, I understand, thank you, all great questions, good evening, President Williams, board members, and Dr. Michael.
Can you speak into the mic, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now? Great, thank you, I appreciate the questions, it's a complex issue, and I appreciate that. Good evening, Dr. President Williams, Dr. Michael, and board members, I'm Tricia Riley, Supervisor of Employee Benefits here, the main question that you're asking is, does Cigna already offer this type of program, and, no, they do not, they do offer some coaching programs, but nothing specific to diabetes or pre-diabetes, they have actually been recommending this program to us, or a similar type of program to us, since I've been on board here at Washington County Schools, and probably prior to that. Diabetes is a severe issue, it's quite costly, it's one of our most expensive diagnoses to treat through the healthcare plan, and also one of the most frequent, it's been named as, as far as a cost saver, one of the low-hanging fruits that we can pursue now, to try to help with the, contain the costs of our system.
So, Mrs. Riley, when you say low-hanging fruit, well, this is going to cost, what, $76,750, the benefit from this investment could be substantial with regard to savings in the area of healthcare?
Yes, it is, we've worked closely with Gallagher Benefit, our consultant Gallagher, and with all of the diabetic, pre-diabetic programs that they've worked with, they've seen generally a return on investment of two to one or greater.
Two to one or greater?
Yes.
And this, this purchase, this procurement, had spawned through the WCPS Healthcare Committee?
Yes, it has.
And that is how it has found its way to us, as a recommendation of that committee? Could you tell us something about that committee, please?
It went through the procurement process, of course, and then we took it to the Healthcare Committee for consideration and comment and questions, everybody on the Healthcare Committee is on board with this program, they acknowledge that diabetes and pre-diabetes is a serious and costly issue for all of our employees, so they do support the recommendation.
Could you tell us, please, who are the representatives on that Healthcare Committee?
It's myself, Mr. Brandonberg, Mr. Prue, Mrs. Baker, I need some help.
Representatives of WCPI, WCSP...
Yes, WCPI, so there are employee group members?
Yes, everyone is represented, four members from each of the three associations are present.
Right, I want the board to be clear on how this all evolves, so Gallagher is our consultant that helps guide us on how to reduce costs, we've been very, very, very successful in Washington County in providing good healthcare benefits and maintaining costs, that's why in my budget presentation today, we have a zero, hopefully it will remain that way, and nothing will change till now, and when our budget's finalized with healthcare, but right now, we have a zero increase in healthcare costs, a lot of that is a result of a number of recommendations that Gallagher has made over the last two or three years, and with help of the Healthcare Committee and agreements from the various bargaining groups, we've been able to work collectively to keep our healthcare costs down while offering an excellent healthcare benefit. So, this isn't something that was designed by staff, this was recommended by our consultant that also was bid and approved by the board, to make this recommendation to create savings, but the other part I don't want to miss on this is, not only is there a return on the investment for this, but I think it leads to healthier employees, healthier dependents, they don't need medical treatment and things like that, that's the cost that we avoid, but in the end, they end up healthier, I hope, and get to avoid healthcare costs, so that's the purpose of this, and it started from our consultant that gives us guidance on how to control our healthcare costs, supported by our association, our various groups that are represented on the Healthcare Committee, and we're working to keep our healthcare costs down, it allows the Board of Ed to use their resources differently for other needs, you know, whether they be for compensation, or for, you know, more staff, or whatever that would be, instead of investing more money in healthcare and not getting the benefit from it, so this is an investment to reduce healthcare and to gain a healthcare benefit on top of that for some employees.
So, we don't know that this, actually, the $76,000 that we're going to spend a year, it will be at least five years before we realize whether or not the program has indeed been beneficial to us and the cost of our healthcare, I noticed that we pay $150 per session for those actively engaged, if it doesn't work, so we spend $350,000 before we scrub the plan?
Again, it's not very likely that that's going to happen, I do understand the concern, I don't think we'll see a return until five years, I believe we're going to start experiencing some savings more quickly than that, maybe not the first year, but it's going to build as time goes, because the program will pick up momentum, employees are going to tell their friends, I'm in this program, I really enjoy it, I have an individual coach helping me every week get through the next step, it's educational, it's also helping you with behavior change, whether you're pre-diabetic or diabetic, diabetics that are uncontrolled could cost between $15,000 and $50,000 per year to our plan, we're trying to help to rein that in a little bit, have people be healthier, reduce absenteeism, and save money at the same time, the main priority is to help improve our employees' health.
But the money that we're saving, we won't realize for a while.
It's difficult to measure that exactly, because we are being billed on specific encounters, this, I'm sorry, this is David Brandonberg, Executive Director of Finance, we are being billed for specific encounters and participants in this program, this goes, this program goes beyond just paying for the cost to treat diabetes, it also reaches out to those who are pre-diabetic, which is about 4%, 4% to 6% of our population.
I'm sorry, Dave, how...
What percent?
4% to 6% of our population is pre-diabetic, and so, it's also, they are also eligible to participate in this, they will be, as Tricia mentioned, there will be weekly encounters with a coach, there will be an online app to do this, we looked at a couple of these and test drove them a little bit ourselves, and, you know, considered the cost and the benefits of each program, we have been told by our consultants that usually the savings are at least twice what the cost is, but it's difficult to measure initially in the first year, we do, though, expect significant savings, Gallagher has been our consultant for three or four years now, and have saved us millions of dollars, and so, we feel comfortable with this recommendation, as Tricia mentioned, Cigna has their own version of this, and they've been trying to get us to implement it for a while, just as a recommendation, we've considered it and looked at the various programs as part of the competitive process, and believe that this is the best alternative.
And you've had other school systems that you can compare, the realized gain of money in the healthcare... in the healthcare delivery system?
Gallagher says that they have, with other clients, that they have seen that, yes. I, I can't name specific school systems. I don't know if you can or not.
No, I did have one reference, return my email.
We're talking educators, who-
Right, right.
This comes out, doesn't come out of the general fund, correct?
No, this is part of the self-insurance fund, which is annually a $50 million plan. So as a percentage of the total cost, it's very small. It would not, even if there were no savings at all, a $76,000 annual cost would, would not add, you know, hardly anything to the, to the cost of the program. We spend about that much annually on our employee assistance program. Again, another, another beneficial to those employees who use it, but it's a small cost in the scheme of the overall $50 million program.
I see this as a win. I see this as whenever you can have employees that are healthy and happy because they're healthy, I, I see this as a win. I, I know we are all about money and we worry about money, but this comes from the self-insurance fund and I think it's going to be a positive thing. I think it's a good thing for employees and I am all for it.
Could you explain to those watching and to those here in the audience, as well as to board members, what exactly the self-insurance fund is and how money happens to accumulate in that self-insurance fund?
Yes, I'd be glad to. We set aside a separate fund to account for the transactions of the self-insurance fund and all of the cost of our claims and our administration costs are charged to that, that fund. And money comes in from employees to the tune of about 12% to 15% of the total cost of the plan from retirees, because retirees are covered by the plan, and from the Board of Ed, is, you know, from the general fund, the budget that we discussed this afternoon, as well as the grant funds and the food service fund. Wherever there's an employee charged, the employer, that's the board, pays, you know, that, the share of that. And those monies are transferred each payroll into the fund balance or into the self-insurance fund. And we have been having a very good experience with that fund for the last several years. We've built up a $22 million fund balance as of, as of the end of November.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to remind everybody, I mean, we're not the experts on this. Even our team's not the experts on this. It's why we, it's why we hire this outside consultant. Their total responsibility is to give us good guidance on things. That's what Gallagher does. Our experience with Gallagher has been very successful. That's how we've been able to maintain this fund balance that we have and how in recent years, we've been able to have very, very low costs. Again, my counterparts are talking about double-digit increases in healthcare. We may well experience a second year of 0% increase in healthcare costs to our employees. We're going to forget how good that feels the years that we end, have to increase it at some point. This is a strategic move to continue to save money, suggested by our consultant, who so far has been correct over and over and over. That wasn't always true of our past consultant. So I would just strongly encourage the board, we're out of our areas of expertise, at least I am. Gallagher has come through time and time again. Their experience has been a two-for-one savings, is what I've heard. Again, coming from our consultants, not coming from our staff, not coming from us, not coming from the Healthcare Committee is a whim. But on top of the potential of a two-for-one savings is health benefits to our, to our employees and their dependents. So I would just strongly encourage the board to give this due consideration. Again, whether you vote this down or not, we, we can reexamine and whatever. But I would, I would hope it would benefit the health of our employees as well as save us money.
Yeah, we, we estimate that about 10% of our employees are affected by this diagnosis.
Diabetes is a big thing, a big thing. I also want to get back to the other topic before we, before the board votes, if there's no other questions on this topic.
Any other questions? Dr. Michael, you had something?
Yes, Mr. Allen. The renewal for item two is a five-year renewal. And we've been doing annual renewals with the company and our next renewal expires in February. So if we were to bring back multiple bids, we would need a year or, I would say at least a year to study and put out the bid for other consultants. If you don't want to renew for five years, I guess before our contract expires in February, we could bring back a one-year renewal and then we could launch into a study of other student information systems, if that's the will of the board. It's a major undertaking. I'm not married or sold to Synergy at all, but it is not something that you can do overnight. I was partially involved in the last time in 2013 and it was a long year, year and a half, just to pick the company. I had multiple people come in multiple times, people went out and saw the products, then they bid on the product, you know, submitted their bids. And then again, this year, year and a half phase over. So we, we will need to do something with EduPoint come February, whatever date our contract expires. So I don't know if there's any other information, Mr. Allen, you can share about that. Correct anything I said incorrect, at least, please.
I believe you said everything correctly. When you do change out a system, there's a lot of actual work that has to go in moving data and things. But it's also an impact to the school because everything that the teachers know about, taking attendance and all the other functionality in the system has to change. And not to say that that's the wrong move if there's, you know, a need to do so, but I'm not sure at, at this time, I'm hearing that, but certainly willing to study that. But we do have this renewal coming up in February, so we would have to extend with them at least for a short period of time, as there would be no way to get another system that quickly.
I, I would say this, that if we do that, you know, with so-called transitory inflation, which isn't in existence, you know, the cost could increase. Plus, we get a new system, there could be bugs in it. I think in the Synergy system years ago, and I mean years ago, I was still teaching, there were problems with it. It took time to work those out. So any new system could have those bugs in. We go through the same process of, I can remember grades disappearing and you had to get them back and so forth and all that. I don't think that's a problem anymore. So any new system could have these bugs. So I would say go ahead with the five-year extension of this. That would be my, my-
So, Mr. Prue, I'm sorry, Mr. Prue?
I just want to add one thing, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
With all that the teachers have to deal with, putting in a new program and having them have to learn a new program all over again, I, I just can't see that. I just would not want to put that on them. If this is going to fix the grading, the, the problem with the system during grading, I say, in my opinion, this is what we should go with.
And I, I will say that of the two, this one, the student information system, is my biggest concern. I understand that no matter what we do, it's work. If we wouldn't be sitting here, people didn't have to work for it. But we knew that this was, this day was coming. And we're sitting here looking at not, not really a proposal. I mean, we're pretty much being told we have to do this because this is something that's needed and the contract is up by February. Why weren't we looking at this a year ago? Why didn't we start looking for other quotes? I have a very big problem looking at spending almost $1.5 million of taxpayer money without having something to compare it against. I, I don't think that this is a, a good way to do business. I'm, I'm not going to vote for this mainly because I don't see other quotes and I don't know if this is efficient.
Mr. Evans.
On top of the fact that it also seems like maybe there, we've, we've been told it sounds like there have been issues with this. So we knew that there were issues and we didn't go and, and shop it around before that.
But those issues were years ago.
Do we understand what this is? This is not something you go out and bid five like items and we flip the switch and we get it tomorrow. This is a major, major undertaking to switch systems. And if that's the will of the board and/or the direction of technology, we just need time to do it. So I would not recommend doing a five-year renewal. I would like for staff potentially bring back whatever period of time it would be. One would be surprising if we come back and we re, a year from now, brought you back EduPoint, but brought it back at $2 million instead of this renewal rate. I assume the five-year plan is saving us money to renew five years at a time instead of the annual renewals, which are very costly. I am not married to this system. I have no love or interest in one system over another system. I just know the work we're talking about. We are talking about a, something that's going to take a substantial amount of time, not the work. We're not worried about the work. It was a substantial amount of cost to switch systems as well. There's a, there's a lot of pay that we do to switch the system, to a new system. This is not something we any can bring, five bids and just switch from information system to information system to information system. We will drive everybody out of this business. This is a major, major backbone of what we're working with. I have no issue with turning down the bid, but if, and if you want to switch systems, there is no guarantee we'll get something better. We might be able to get something cheaper, but it might be more work for staff, for teachers and other people. But I have no, not married to this. We are bringing it two months ahead of the renewal that was a one-year renewal. I appreciate staff looking into, one, getting it into the cloud, which will save us money, we believe, long-term in trying to maintain saver, servers and backup. There's a lot of other things that's going on here to save us money. And the five-year renewal is saving us money over the one-year renewals. But understand, when we turn this down, we can't get to February 1st and not have a student information system. So we'll just have to come back with another solution either. You know, with needing four votes out of five here tonight, this is going to be an interesting vote on either one of these items, but-
So-
I just want to be clear, this is not something annually we can bring back with five quotes. That does not work for this kind of change. This would be like changing completely. I can't even give you an illustration of what it is. It's gigantic.
The intent of the five-year was, as you said, to save money. There, there will be no price increases on most of the components that are in the student information system. It also creates that stability because it's probably two years to change. If we said, yes, we must change, it's probably two years from the day you say that to the day you actually change. And this would create a little bit of stability that we know we're not going to have to until later on. The other thing is this is not paid in one lump sum. It is paid, you know, annually at the appropriation of the board. So if the board says there's no money for this, then we do not continue. We're not locked into five years either.
I also wanted to add that not only is this affecting the teachers, but the students. I mean, I have, I have the Synergy app on my phone. All of my friends have the Synergy app on their phone. All the parents, a lot of the parents, my parents do it. Everybody has a Synergy app on their phone. If we switch systems, this is not just a major thing for the school, but for everybody in the community who has kids, for the kids. This is not just some simple thing. This is something that I remember when we had, we got Synergy and I was in elementary school. And it was a really big thing that now you can check grades on your phone. But if we change systems, this is a very, very, very big change to the school system, to the school system that I've grown up in, to the school system my friends have grown up in, and to the school system that parents in the community are used to.
So, Mr. Prue provided me some information. When we originally did this, excuse me, the first year was $667,000 for, for the first year, probably included implementation. And then also, just as a frame of reference, if we would switch to something else, we would also, this is, this is something you'll have, I mean, the, the service and maintenance agreements are something you're going to have no matter what you switch to. So if we switched from, if we went away from this and switched to ABC Company's Student Information System, they're going to continue to have a yearly service and, and updates and, and, you know, to pay to get the system updated and serviced. So it's, when, most of the times when we do a software as a service, which is what this amounts to, we continue to utilize that service until, you know, staff or, you know, senior staff or, or technology or whoever decides that that's no longer fulfilling our need. You know, because like they said, it's not something that is easily switched, so.
And that is why I wanted to separate the two motions, because EduPoint is very important. And I did not have the information, not that I'm for diabetes. I'm at our end, you know that I want education as much as anyone else does. I just think that when you have a system that's based on employee weight loss, you need to look at both of those that we, the, was, um, what was the other bid? Amara? It, I just didn't have enough information to smack them together because EduPoint, yes, I needed more information on the other system.
So, and, and on those, you know, that $76,000 is an estimate. And Gallagher looked at our population and said, here's how many people we think will use it and here's where, you know, you'll get some people who do get to step one and then maybe drop out. And you'll get some people to go to step six and, you know, so that, that cost will vary. You know, it's, it's not a locked-in $76,750, you know, one year it could be less. In some years it could be more, depending on the participation.
So it's based on the number of people who applied to do it?
Right. If you look at the, the exhibit, you know, it's those, they get billed per threshold and then down the bottom, the $150 per session for actively engaged employees.
Thank you.
Yep, sure.
Any further discussion, any other question? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting on a motion that was made by Mr. Evans and seconded by Mr. Stauffer. And it involves the approval of procurement of two items. All those in favor of the motion? Okay, we have four votes, all those opposed. Okay, student member concurs with the four affirmative votes and the motion carries. The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you, thank you. Okay, at this time we'll move to our second item, which is a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel Incorporated, with Mr. Prue, our chief operating officer, presenting.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. I'm pleased this evening to present a memorandum, memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of Washington County and Washington County Educational Support Personnel. In short, this memorandum calls for the reclassification of employees that are paraprofessionals currently on the wage scale in grade five and moves them to grade six employees. This is a classification of employees that we have been struggling to recruit and to retain under the current environment. And we believe an additional bump in the salary would be enticing to potential candidates. We've been working closely with Washington County Educational Support Personnel to bring this forward and we seek your approval at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Prue, is there a motion?
President Williams. I move to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel Incorporated regarding additional provisions of the negotiated agreement.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zetmyer. Questions, discussion?
I would probably just like to point out the cooperation of the educational support personnel as we kind of try to tackle the, the labor shortage, you know, in a variety of ways. This is, this is one more step. They worked with us last year with the bus driver shortage and I just appreciate their cooperation.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. I'd just like to acknowledge the, the seriousness of the situation with the shortage of educational support employees and applicants who are willing to perform the duties of a paraprofessional. I think our students are being impacted in innumerable ways and I, I think this is something that we can do to address that very, very serious situation. I am in support.
I'd just like to say something, if I could.
Sure.
I'd just like to say that I sat for many years on the other side of the table with the Teachers Association and so forth. And it is tough when you come onto the board then, as I have as a board member, you see the other side and you try to balance the teacher demands and ESP demands, if that's, that's what we're dealing here, with here tonight, and the broader picture up here on the Board of Education. So it is tough. It's a balancing act and it's one that personally I've tried to achieve- It's a balancing act, and it's one that personally I've tried to achieve during my five years on the board and so forth. We try to work with the association groups to do the best we can for them.
Anyone else? Okay, we're voting to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel Incorporated regarding additional provisions of the negotiated agreement. All those in favor of the motion? Okay, five affirmative votes. Student member concurs, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Prue. You going to be sticking around?
I think you're stuck with me a little bit.
Okay. We'll move on to our third item of new business, and that is consideration of dedication of funds for the renovation in addition at Tech High, Mr. Prue.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams, once again. This motion is to dedicate funds from the Board of Education's fund balances for the purpose of supporting the renovation and additions at Washington County Technical High School to support the new diesel program as well as renovations to other programs. I, I must apologize, there is an error in the motion, and I'd like to bring that to your attention. In terms of the values that are presented, the total value that we're asking you to dedicate does not change. It is still $9,794,000. Unfortunately, the balance remaining left from the urban improvement project is actually $1,279,000, excuse me, $1,279,015. So 1-2-7-9-0-1-5, which means the value we're asking you to dedicate from unrestricted fund balance changes to $8,514,985. 8-5-1-4-9-8-5. I apologize for that error. As you may recall, over the last year, we were able to use some of our ESTA funds on unique purchases that qualified from the general fund. Most of the fund balance that we're asking to dedicate from unrestricted fund balance is actually reserved from last school year that were set aside strategically by this board for the purpose of funding this project. So with that, Mr. Brandon Burgis here with me if you have questions concerning the fund balances, and we are seeking your approval.
Thank you. Any discussion, any questions?
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, sorry. I'm, I'm here making the, and thank you for those corrections very much.
Sorry for the mistake.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, for keeping me in line. Would you like to make the motion?
Sure. President Williams, I move to approve the reallocation of the remaining $1,279,15 dedicated fund balance from the urban improvement project to the Washington County Technical High School project, and to dedicate $8,514,985 from unrestricted fund balance to dedicated fund balance for the Washington County Technical High School project.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer. Now we can have questions and discussion.
So was that just a typo then for the, the discrepancy in dollar amount there? Or is there something more that might impact our, our budget for this?
The, the difference was really, is what we used in revenue for the fiscal year ended '21. And so there was an entry made to the designated fund balance in fiscal '21 to reduce it to the $1,279. However, that, that entry was in error reversed in FY '22. So when I looked at the number that was in the general ledger to give Mr. Prue how much we had left, I gave him the wrong number. And I was comparing that this evening before the meeting, I was comparing how much we had from all sources in case someone asked me, how much do we have in this fund balance or that fund balance? How much do we have in unrestricted? And I was like, something's wrong here with the dedicated reserves. And that's when I discovered the error, and I'm very sorry for that.
Okay, we're all human. We all make mistakes. I just want to make sure that nothing else changed, anything else that we have planned moving forward.
Any other questions? So we're voting on a motion made by Mr. Evans and seconded by Dr. Zettmeyer to approve the allocation of the $1,279,15 of dedicated fund balance from the urban improvement project to Washington County Technical High School project, and to dedicate $8,514,985 from the unrestricted fund balance to dedicated fund balance for the Washington County Technical High School project. All those in favor? All right, so we have five affirmative votes and the student member concurs. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
And our next item, item number four, is the consideration of a bid for renovations and additions at Technical High School.
Thank you again, Mrs. Williams. With me this evening are Mr. Baketul, Supervisor of Purchasing, and Robert Rollins, Director of Facilities Planning and Development. At this time, we're seeking your approval to award the bid on the Washington County Technical High School renovations and additions to Warner Construction. They are the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. We were pleased with the bid turnout, seven or eight bidders, which is, is a great number on a, on a large project. And, and the bids were, you know, we often look at this bid dispersion. How close are the next bidders to the low? And this was, this was a tightly contested bid, as you can see from the bid tabulation. And, you know, we do believe that the price was impacted by current market conditions as we, a little bit of what we talked about today in our, in our budget session, some of the inflationary factors. But we're pleased with the bidder. We're pleased with the price.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to award the contract for the renovations in addition at Washington County Technical High School to Warner Construction in the amount of $9,794,000.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer. Questions, discussion? I, I have one question. Have we had Warner Construction do projects for us in the past?
The students are doing the Boonsville renovations.
Are they doing Boonsville renovations? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to award the contract for the renovations in addition at Washington County Technical High School to Warner Construction in the amount of $9,794,000. All those in favor? All right, we have five affirmative votes. Student member concurs, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say I'm eager to see this work begin, and, and I'm hoping that we can get, get it underway in January. I hope the weather is such that we can get this started and get it finished by the start of the school year.
It's our goal, absolutely.
So excited. Okay. Hi, Dr. Will Cox. We'll move to our next item under consideration, which is a donation.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, and board members. I am requesting approval of a gift of $6,532.20 to the North Hagerstown High School Orchestra from the North High Orchestra Association.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve a gift of $6,532.20 to the North Hagerstown High School Orchestra Club account from the North High Orchestra Association.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer. Questions, discussion? Yes, finish.
I see that this donation is due to the North Hagerstown High School Orchestra Club becoming defunct. What was your role with the orchestra?
My understanding is this was a parent organization that raised funds, similar to like an athletic booster club or a band booster club. And so the club is no longer operating, so they're giving the funds to the school to use for the orchestra students.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that we're blessed to have had an organization such as this who worked in support of our students and are very fortunate to have other organizations as well that support our students.
I'll say that it is a shame to see an organization like that no longer in service. Me being more athletic than orcastrally talented, there is very significant importance for this. And unfortunately, a lot of these, these clubs kind of go unnoticed, and I, I wish there was more out there like this, something like Nora Roberts Foundation giving funds to the Boonsville Auditorium. It's a shame to see them go. So hopefully this doesn't affect the club too significantly, and we'll be able to, they'll be able to continue on forward as well.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. All right, we'll move to the vote. So we're moving, or we're voting, we're not moving, we're voting to approve a gift of $6,532.20 to North Hagerstown High School Orchestra Club account from the North Hagerstown High School Orchestra Association. All those in favor of the gift? Thank you. Okay, we have five affirmative votes. Student member concurs, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Will Cox.
Thank you.
Our final item of new business this evening is a first reading of proposed changes to policy JICG. Good evening.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. The Policy Committee is conducting a comprehensive review of the student section of the Board of Education's policy manual. The committee reviewed policies JICG and JFLG at its public work session on December 14th, 2021, and recommended changes to policy JICG and the rescission of policy JFLG. The committee's changes to policy JICG include applying the policy not just to students, but to staff and visitors as well. In addition, the committee recommended recodification to move it out of the student section because the proposed changes will make the policy applicable to students, staff, and visitors. The policy be recodified to the A section of the Board of Education's policy manual, which covers foundations and basic commitments of the district. The committee is recommending the Board of Education approve the first reading of these recommended changes. The committee is also recommending the rescission of policy JFLG because policy JICG already covers the subject matter of policy JFLG. The committee is recommending the Board of Education approve the first reading to rescind the policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Ram. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy JICG entitled Use and Possession of Tobacco Products and the first reading to rescind policy JFLG entitled Tobacco-Free School Premises.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Questions from Mrs. Ram or any discussion?
I have a question. So what does it mean when it says tobacco and tobacco products? To me, it kind of sounds like the Department of Redundancy Department.
Vaping.
Right, but I mean, yeah, anyway, so.
Well, tobacco is by definition the actual leaf that you would smoke, and tobacco product is when they liquefy, it's no longer in leaf form, and there's various ways to get the nicotine and tobacco substance, and so it covers both.
Okay.
Anything further? The vote, we're moving to, oh, we're moving. We're voting to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy JICG entitled Use and Possession of Tobacco Products and the first reading to rescind policy JFLG entitled Tobacco-Free School Premises. All those in favor? Okay, we have five affirmative votes. Student member concurs and the motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Ram. And that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Just a couple of things this evening. First, I want to ask that Mr. Prue and Ms. Ram come forward. I just want to bring a brief update on where we stand with COVID. Mr. Prue will share a little bit about that information. And then also, I was hoping this January 4th day was going to go away, where we're required to have either staff vaccinated, a test to be vaccinated, and/or submit to weekly testing. But that process just keeps bouncing around courts, and I'm going to ask Ms. Ram to bring us up to speed where we are on that and a communication that's going to be going out to staff and how we'll help them through that process. So I don't know if we're starting with Mr. Prue. Maybe just a brief update, where we stand with COVID, what we know right now. We know the state website has been down, the state portion's come back up, but the county portion is not. We are experiencing a substantial amount of COVID cases. I think they've never dealt with it in the last two weeks. So, Mr. Prue?
Thank you, Dr. Michael. You know, I'm actually looking at the state dashboard as we speak. When the, when the state dashboard went down on December 3rd, our rate was in the, in the 14 percentile for positivity rate in Washington County. The state's rate was approximately 5.43%, if I remember correctly. When the site came back up this week, I can share with you that as of today, the state is at 11.46%. So they've seen about 115% increase in positivity in two and a half weeks. I'm looking at, currently looking at numbers of cases reported. The change just in one day from yesterday to, well, really would be, the, the data always lags. So I'm looking at the, the change in data from Sunday to Monday is a one-day change of 6,200 cases. That is the highest one-day total since the pandemic began, looking according to the state's data chart that I'm looking at right now. You know, we are seeing, if you watch the school system dashboard, over the last couple of weeks, it's not uncommon to see that we have 60 cases or somewhere thereabouts on a Monday. That's been fairly common. You often play catch-up from the weekend, families that don't report to us until, until Monday morning, staff that may not report to us until Monday morning. We get data from the health department every day, but generally not on the weekend. So you see that on a Monday. Today's data mirrors that. I think we're in the, in the, you know, low 50s today. So we've got a, a two-day total this week. It's, you know, 110 cases of, of students and staff. So the virus is significantly impacting the county at this time, but I cannot tell you what the county's metrics are. They are not loaded on the state's dashboard, and my understanding is that the county health department also relies on the state's dashboard to, to report that data. So I'm, my last conversation with staff at the county health department was that they were not sure what the county's positivity rate was at this time either. But that's sort of the, the status of COVID-19 that I can share for the school system and for the county at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prue. And Ms. Ram, if you could just update us a little bit on what our next steps are and, and what could yet happen with this emergency temporary standard from the OSHA.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. This is a reminder, on November 5th, the OSHA issued an ETS, this document here, an ETS is an emergency temporary standard. Very quickly subsequently, the Fifth Circuit on November 6th, the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals, I should say, temporarily suspended the implementation or the enforcement of this ETS document. So we were in limbo as a district, whether on January 5th, we were going to be required to have our employees either be tested, be vaccinated, provide proof of, or test weekly. And then on Friday evening afternoon, the Sixth Circuit, well, I should say, there was multiple other circuits that filed lawsuits. It was consolidated, the Sixth Circuit, I'll save you from legal explanation. Sixth Circuit heard all of the combined lawsuits and issued a decision on late Friday lifting the stay. So while I want to address the fact there are still motions pending with the Sixth Circuit, whether some of the legal aspects of validity, the enforcement powers, they were only ruling on the stay, meaning can the ETS be enforced, awaiting the court's decision on the other, the merits of the case. So on Friday, the Court of Appeals said, yes, the stay is lifted, which means we are to go forward as an employer of more than 100 employees that as of January, well, it's February 9th. So there's an enforcement date initially in the ETS. Department of Labor came out Saturday morning and said, as of February 9th, is when they will start enforcing it. So it is effective in January, but they won't start enforcing it until February 9th as long as, and here's a quote from the Department of Labor, "An employer is..." long as, and here's a quote from the Department of Labor, "An employer is exercising reasonable, good faith efforts to come into compliance with this emergency temporary standard." So in plain English, what it means for us as a district is that employees either need to provide proof of vaccination, and what proof means is a copy of either their vaccination record or a healthcare, like summary of your vaccination, or an attestation where the employee affirms that they have in fact been vaccinated. And what vaccinated means under the emergency temporary standard is both doses in a two-dose series or one dose in like the Johnson &amp; Johnson, not the two weeks post the second dose just to have had both doses or one in a Johnson &amp; Johnson. In the alternative, if you are not vaccinated, then you do have to submit to weekly testing. I will also note, after the Sixth Circuit issued this, an appeal was filed with the Supreme Court. It was assigned to Justice Kavanaugh, as Supreme Court justices are assigned to circuits. And Justice Kavanaugh, since it's an emergency motion, can rule on it, or it can be, he can refer to the entire Supreme Court. So while that's still pending, at this time as a district, we move forward unless we hear otherwise from the courts.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to be communicating with staff. There'll be a, an app or a technology resource where you can upload your vaccination card or your affidavit that affirms, you don't have to share your card, you don't share your information, but you basically be swearing that you've been vaccinated. And/or if you choose to do neither of those things, or you're not vaccinated, you have to submit to weekly testing, and there's a portal there to upload your weekly testing information. We're going to try to have a vaccination site and some hours available to help assist people, but this will obviously be a significant undertaking and challenge for everybody who will have to comply with submitting information either once by, if they've been vaccinated, or weekly through the testing. If any of that changes, Washington County is not requiring vaccinations, and we obviously will not be part of this program if it changes by the Supreme Court. Until then, what we understand is we have to make a good faith effort to get started on January 4th, and that will start to be enforced in February. So we'll be rolling out more information about that. We're going to share a information newsletter in the form of a smores, a brand name that we call our newsletter, I guess. That'll go out tonight. We've shared with administrators so they can try to answer questions. I'm sure there'll be, you know, a fair amount of confusion, but we'll try to, you know, continue to provide information as things develop and as the technology's available to upload your information. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that, share publicly, and we'll also share our newsletter tonight and try to respond to questions. So with that, thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Prue, maybe, I think Mrs. Brecker's still here, maybe you can help answer some of the questions that she had. I think you're best suited to try to walk through that.
Absolutely. Between myself and Mr. Marriott, he's reviewing the case as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just really two other things. There's comments tonight about, you know, covering and substitutes and the challenge I know that presents for our teaching and IA staff in particular, even administrators recovering classes. I don't know how much it's going to help, but in the budget earlier today, I shared with you, we plan to raise our substitute rates by $20 a day next year. We're probably going to go ahead and implement that on January 10th. I'll work with our HR staff in publicizing that to try to recruit more substitutes and encourage more people to participate in our substitute pool. So hopefully by increasing that, we've had neighboring counties and across the state borders have increased their pay in substitute. So we're competing with those areas when you can go just a few miles one direction to the other and get more pay. So we're going to try to continue to address our substitute shortage by increasing our substitute pay, the equivalent of what it'll be for next year. And other than that, board, I just want to wish everybody a very happy holidays. I know our team has been working hard, our staff, our students, our community. We appreciate everything that's going on, I appreciate the board's efforts. So I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday, whatever you celebrate, a happy New Year, and a Merry Christmas to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Here we have Dr. Willow standing in for Dr. Pugh this evening for Personnel Actions.
Good evening again. I'm here tonight to see your approval for Personnel Actions here.
Tuesday, December 21st, as presented in closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Willow. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the Personnel Actions dated Tuesday, December 21st, 2021, as presented in closed session.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Thank you, Doctors Zettmeyer. Any questions before we move to the vote? Okay, we're moving to approve, we're moving, why do I keep saying that? We're voting to approve the Personnel Actions dated Tuesday, December 21st, 2021, as presented in closed session. All those in favor? We have five affirmative votes. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Willow. At this time, we'll have Board Member Committee Reports. Would you like to begin down there, Doctors Zettmeyer?
We will meet again next year. It sounds too far away. It does.
Thank you, Doctors Zettmeyer. Finance Committee, Ms. Evans?
I will ditto that with the Finance Committee.
Next year. Okay, Mr. Guest is now here to report on Facilities. Mrs. Murray, Human Resources?
Yes.
Human Resources will meet Tuesday, January 11th, 2022, at 4:00 PM here at the CES.
Mr. Gupta is not here to give a report on the Policy Committee.
We'll meet next year.
We will be meeting twice in January. Mr. Gupta, did you want to say something about the student government?
Yeah. Well, the Washington County Association of Student Council sent a delegation to the Maryland Association of Student Council's Executive Board Session at South High, which is the first time they've hosted in three years. And there were, there was four proposed amendments and three of them were passed, but making the state's smop election more equitable, especially for those from smaller counties like ours, so we can get more state smops from our county and other small counties.
Thank you. Next item, under Miscellaneous Business, is Future Agenda Items. And you have a list in your packet of Future Agenda Items. On January 4th, a presentation on the Literacy Tutoring Program, Math Tutoring Program on January 18th. Also on January, January 18th, excuse me, we will have our first legislative briefing. Mrs. Cabe will most likely be here. On February 1st, we will have another work session. We had one this morning on the Superintendent's Draft Fiscal Year 2023 Budget. And then later at our business meeting, we will have an action item that will involve the adoption of the Board of Education's draft budget. That's when the Superintendent's Draft Budget becomes the Board's Draft Budget. Also that evening, February 1st, we'll have a report on apprenticeships and on the next February meeting, a legislative briefing. Moving to March, we'll have the Representatives from the BARC, that's the Budget Advocacy and Review Committee, who will be coming to make their recommendations regarding the Fiscal Year 2023 Draft General Fund Operating Budget. March 1st, another legislative briefing on March 15th. And that evening also, we will be taking action on the General Fund Operating Budget. I'd like to mention with regard to things coming up in the future, at our Policy Committee meeting, I put forward the idea of having a board work session to discuss the Maryland State Board of Education's model policy on bullying, harassment, and intimidation. So that is on your 12-month calendar, showing as January 18th, a work session. The State Board has made some changes to its policy, and that will require local boards taking a look at their policies to revise possibly the school system's policy. So I saw this work session as an opportunity to be inclusive, to have all involved, so that we can have an understanding of not only our policy and the changes that we're making to it, but the state's policy as well. So Mrs. Ram, our Chief Legal Counsel, will be playing a big role in that work session. So work sessions are optional, but I do hope that everyone will take advantage of that opportunity to become familiar with these policies and to have their questions answered and to build a base of common knowledge. So please mark your calendars for that. That's it for Future Agenda Items, and we can move now to Board Member Comments. Mr. Gupta, would you like to begin?
Um, mine's is short. I just want to wish everybody a happy holidays, Christmas break, or winter break is coming up soon, and I hope everybody has a great time.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray?
I'll echo that. I wish everyone a happy holiday. I hope all school staff members are able to take a breath, relax, enjoy time with their families, and reboot because they certainly deserve it. So happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mr. Stauffer?
I have several items. I've just not done a order of importance or anything, so bear with me. Concerning the budget session today, I've been on the board five years, and I want everybody to know that I've worked with this staff and this superintendent for five years, and when he presents a budget, a draft budget, I know it's been scrutinized and looked at and contains very little fluff. I can tell you that in the old Superintendent's budgets, there was fluff, and everybody pretty much knows that, but the budget is a bare-bones budget. There are things that aren't covered, and if you listen to the work session, you know what those things are. Some personal opinion things, just speaking for myself as a citizen, not necessarily a board member, but I do hope that SCOTUS overrules the ETS by OSHA. I don't want it to present personnel problems for us and so forth. Another personal opinion, I want to see schools stay in person, and from what I've heard from just general conversation outside of any formal session or anything today, just talking at lunch and stuff or dinner tonight, you know, there are people who want to stay in person, not go to virtual. As I've said many times, we can't lose kids for an extended period of time by putting them on virtual like we did during '20 and part of 2021 and so forth. I do say this, I'm not, I've said this many times, I'm not for mandatory vaccination, but we need some help reducing the transmission rate apparently in this county and so forth so that we can perhaps meet some of the standards for off-ramping with the masking perhaps down the road, this type of thing. And this last thing, I don't want this to come out wrong, and I'll look at you, Mr. Evans, because I'm not vilifying you or chastising you in any way, but we can have the conversation about items, but personally, I would like to know that you're going to amend the agenda and that type of thing, and your concerns about issues prior, more than five or 10 minutes before the business session comes up and so forth. You know, in the past, we have always written up questions and sent them to the superintendent so that he is aware and staff is aware and every other board member is aware that there are situations. So as a, I would just ask as a, as a colleague and a friend, that you, that you do that for us. And as far as holiday wishes, for me, it's a Merry Christmas, but for those of you who do Kwanzaa, do Hanukkah, however you worship, and this type of thing. And the last thing, I don't mean to be verbose tonight, but I watched several days those problems down in Kentucky and those people who lost loved ones, lost their homes and everything, and I, I got to thinking, the older I get, the more sentimental I get, and the more easily I come to tears and everything. I don't know if that's good or bad, but you know, the problems we face here in this school district and the problems we face in our own personal lives, they don't float a boat to what those people are facing down there in Kentucky. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, and have a good holiday. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Mr. Evans?
Well, first of all, obviously Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Kwanzaa Festivus, whatever it is you celebrate. Hopefully you guys have a great break here and come back ready to go for the, for the new year. I will say that as far as my motion went tonight, I personally don't know how appropriate it is to talk about it before the motion. I was mainly asking about the appropriate way to amend the motion because of another motion I made previously, I was told that that was incorrect. So my, my question was more procedural. I don't, I don't necessarily think that what I did was wrong. I, I do think that, and I don't necessarily think the way the vote went tonight was wrong either. Obviously, there's a reason why there's seven of us, and I've said that before, but I don't know how appropriate it would be to have that discussion before the meeting as well. So that's where, where I wanted to.
I didn't say have to, you misinterpreted my words. I just said simply that as one board member, and I think several other board members were, and I think you know this, and because I've seen questions that you've written up to the superintendent ahead of time. I don't want to get in a debate with you tonight about this. You're entitled to your opinion, but I'd like to know about it more than five or 10 minutes before we come into a business meeting that you've got concerns about those things. We can have the discussion right here like we did. I don't have a problem with that, but just let me know that we're going to have that discussion. That's all I'm saying. Excuse me for coming back at you.
I won't debate, I won't. I'll say that I guess I still misinterpret what you're saying because I heard the same thing, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Doctors Zettmeyer.
I'll take the two points for that whole heat. Let's put the merry back into Christmas. Be safe, read a good book.
Mr. Evans, Doctors Zettmeyer, we did have a conversation with regard to how to amend the consent agenda, and I do appreciate that. I hope in some way that it was helpful, Mr. Evans, and, and I do appreciate the discussion that we had prior to the start of the meeting. It's, it's helpful to have that so that we can have things go smoothly. So thank you for that. And whatever holiday you're celebrating, I hope it's a happy one, I hope it's a safe one. A lot has been said about vaccinations and vaccines this evening. It is a concern with the positivity rates in our community, and I hope you'll give consideration to taking care of yourselves and, and those you love and those you come in contact with each and every day. So if there's nothing further, colleagues, Dr. Michael, Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you. We stand adjourned.